Mark, if you can read the conflict of interest, please.
Yes, Mayor. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 I have one on 13 and 14.
And then for me. Okay, because we have so many in attendance for our recognitions of awards and proclamations, we're going to take things just a little bit out of order, and we're going to start with you. So you're always welcome to remain here and listen to the rest of the meeting, but we do want to make sure that we're respectful of your time, so we're going to get started with that first. Having said that, Christina.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Commission, as well as our audience and those who are being recognized today. We really appreciate you all joining us here at the City Commission meeting. So, one of the things that we are starting to do now, this is the first time that we are doing this, we are going to be having a Mayor's Business of the Month, and August 2023 is the first time that that will be recognized. So, before we announce that, I know it's on the agenda, but we do want to show you a little video of this business that we put together, so in case you haven't been there, I think this will make you want to check it out.
Hi, my name is Sophia. I'm the owner and creator of Keto Mini Donuts here in Harlingen, Texas. We've been in business since 2018, and we created Keto Mini Donuts to help out our diabetic community and families who are going through a diabetic diet. We started off with mini donut recipe, and then over the years, we kind of all grew our development into cookies, and brownies, and cakes, and pies, and then this can just go on, and on, and on, and on. To be honest, we have a wide variety of clientele, from the ages of like two, to all the way to like our parents and grandparents, you know, and that's great, and that just shows that we're opening the doors to something that creates a lot of curiosity, you know, because once you hear diabetic baking, first thing you get is the impression that it's going to be planned, or it's going to be boring, you know, not exciting. And we love seeing the kids especially coming in, and even adults, when they see the variety of bright colors and the variety of options, they get excited, and that's why we're in this business. So now they don't get to feel like they're being left out, out of like the common items and common pastries. I get excited about that. We're a very small business, and again, not a lot of people know what we do and what we offer, so having an acknowledgement like this, or having the mayor recognize what we do, you know, our craft, it's just a lot. It says a lot, and I'm more than anything grateful and appreciative for that honor, you know, and that consideration to top it off. So, out of all the businesses, you know, we were chosen, that means something. It's very special to us. We are open Monday through Saturdays. Mondays and Saturdays, we're open from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Tuesdays to Fridays, we're open from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and you can find us at our new location here. It's 1418 East Tyler Avenue, Suite 12. We're right across the street from the Walgreens and Papa John's. If you have a dream, it could be with anything, put it, like, put yourself out there, don't be scared. You will never find out how far you can grow unless you put yourself out there.
So, as you all heard, it was Keto Mini Donuts who will be this month's Mayor's Business of the Month. And so, we'd like to have Sophia Rodriguez join us up front. And we'd also like to have, I know that the mayor wants to share a few words about this initiative as well.
Yes, so, okay, maybe we can leave it right there, yes. So, this is something that is near and dear to my heart, and I think everyone here in the Commission, small businesses, and we want to be able to give back to our community and highlight the small businesses that are in our community, that have shown resilience, that have shown the ability to make it through the pandemic and come out on the other side, being innovative, and being able to provide, you know, serve a need in our community when it comes to trying to live a healthy lifestyle, providing opportunities for snacks and healthy meals, all in trying to promote health and wellness in our community, and also employing people here in our community. So, we commend you for that. We are going to be doing this monthly, so we will have an opportunity to highlight businesses throughout our community. We wanted to start with you, because I know you and I have had some, a conversation when I ran into your store, and we talked about all the great things that you're doing, but this is to kick it off, and from here on out, we are going to involve the community and allow the community to nominate businesses, so that way we have a selection from the, from community members, and you can find that on the social media page for the City of Harlingen. Christina's going to be putting that out there, so that way the community can get involved in this project, and we're just excited to be able to celebrate you, and also celebrate your five-year anniversary. So, we appreciate you, and this is just a way for us to acknowledge you and celebrate in this opportunity that you're providing for the community and also for yourself. Would you like to say a few words?
Can everybody hear me? Yes? First of all, thank you so much. I am very appreciative to be here, very humbled as well, and I'm just grateful to have the opportunity to share with the city what we have to offer, and having, accepting this award, I really want to accept it on behalf of my family, who wasn't able to be here today, but I know they're supporting me from home and from work, and on behalf of all our customers that supported us throughout the years, and especially Harlingen for allowing us to call home, you know, so, thank you so much, and I will cherish this, and I will share this with everyone in our store, so, thank you so much, everyone.
Now, if I can have the Commission join me as we provide the award.
So, as they take some photos, the mayor and Commission also wanted to provide Sophia with a proclamation, so they'll be taking some photos right now while I read the proclamation. You can stay there. The proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas Sophia Rodriguez, with the love and support of her family, established Keto Mini Donuts in 2018 located in Harlingen, Texas. And Sophia came up with a concept of what is now known as Keto Mini Donuts in 2010, when she was selling baked goods solely online," so on social media. "Whereas Keto Mini Donuts business mindset is to promote health and wellness in Harlingen. As part of their commitment, the owners and bakers use healthy ingredients, even within their delicious desserts such as donuts and other baked goods. And Keto Mini Donuts does not just solely sell donuts. They also have a healthy menu to include low-carb and keto-friendly meals, from tacos and pozole, to egg salad and chicken salad on toast. And whereas Keto Mini Donuts is celebrating its fifth anniversary of officially opening in Harlingen, and is currently located at 1418 East Tyler Avenue, and the City of Harlingen recognizes Keto Mini Donuts for its contribution to health, wellness, and the local economy, and applauds the business for being recognized on the Texas Bucket List, which airs on television stations throughout the great state of Texas. Whereas Sophia Rodriguez, born and raised in Harlingen, along with her husband Miguel Gon-- whoops, I did not pronounce that right. Miguel, mother Isabel Rodriguez, daughter Lillian Rose, and son Ryan Corrigan, are proud and grateful to own and operate a thriving local business in the city that they get to call home. Now therefore, Norma Sipulam, Mayor of Harlingen, on behalf of the Commission, does hereby proclaim Keto Mini Donuts as Mayor's Business of the Month for August 2023. Congratulations."
Can everyone give us a good round of applause?
Thank you so much, Sophia, for joining us, and you can find that video on Instagram if you'd like to share it and get a closer look at what the donuts look like. They only have one calorie each.
One calorie each, each donut. You cannot beat that, so I encourage everyone to go give them a try, and they also have meals every week, all healthy meals, and so she can, she can definitely get you on the right path to eating healthy, but also enjoying your meals, so, thank you so much for that. And you can also find her on the Bucket List. I think there's a video on YouTube, and if you Google Keto Donuts and Harlingen, you can see it there. So, what a wonderful day for Keto Donuts. Now, moving on, Christina.
So, now, we would like to recognize four girls who were crowned recently. I think it was just two and a half weeks ago. It was a very exciting pageant that took place in McAllen. They didn't know that they were going to be crowned, and we'd like to recognize them. So, the mayor and Commission would like to recognize Mally Macias. She is Miss Texas Pre-Teen, if you could stand. They'd also like to recognize Gabriela Molina. She is Junior Miss USA, as well as Isabel Garcia, Miss Teen USA. And Aria Longoria, Little Miss Texas. We are very proud of them, and we look forward to seeing all of them out in the community wearing their beautiful crowns, and I know that the mayor would like to share a few words as well about this award.
Well, first and foremost, congratulations, ladies, on an incredible achievement. You all look beautiful today, and we know that you're going to represent your titles with dignity and respect, and I know that Aria has already offered to help in community events, and so we're looking forward to incorporating her. I know she was at the State of the City, and wanting to do other events, so we're excited, and we extend that partnership to all of you to participate in our community events as well. So, as you know already, that community service is important, and that's why you are here, and so we want to be able to provide that opportunity, and hopefully we can do it together. So, again, congratulations on your incredible achievement.
So, we would like you all to join the mayor and Commission up front to receive your recognition from the City of Harlingen. All right, so I know that the Commission is really proud of one of the individuals who is a state champion, so we do have a state champion joining us here today, and that is Victoria Garcia, if you could please stand. So, Victoria competed in masonry, and if you don't know what that is, I can't provide you all of the details about how to do it, but I know that it is, you know, a trade that is mostly, you know, mill-dominated. She competed against 60 boys and three girls, and she was a state champion, number one in the entire state. So, we have seen that, you know, that program grow here in Harlingen. I know that one of her mentors is here as well, Mr. Santain, who, Santian, who is also, you know, he's retired now, but he's a lifelong instructor, and, you know, I've actually been to his class to see the brick process, so it is very impressive that Victoria is, has accomplished this monumentous award. So, for her outstanding accomplishment, placing eighth also at the Skills USA National Championship, so if you're, if you win from your state, you go and compete against others throughout the country, and she brought home eighth place, so that is amazing. So, we want to wish her a big congratulations. She competed against 32 others who were number one in their state and qualified for the Masonry Championship. She also participated in Spog last summer construction camp held at Harlingen High School South, and we would like to congratulate her on the 16th day of August 2023. We'd like to invite you up to receive the award.
If the Commission can join me.
All right, so we also have a good group of students here today from Harlingen High School South. Go Hawks! They competed at the state championship in UIL one-act play, and they were the state champions, so we also have a variety of state champions here with us today. If you are one of those, please stand to be recognized. So, they had an exceptional season, and their outstanding accomplishment was that they were awarded the 2023 5A UIL one-act play state champions with their production of "Indecent" by Paula Vogel. And to kind of talk about the program, I'd like to invite one of their directors, Eddie Cavassos, up here to share a few words.
Hi there, thank you for having us here today. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the City of Harlingen for their unwavering support of the fine arts. It's because of you that these kids feel equipped to go out into the world and share their messages. This is actually the third consecutive year that Harlingen South has advanced to the state level of competition. This year, in the 5A Conference, we were new to that conference, there was an unprecedented amount of schools, over a few hundred schools within the state. We advanced through several rounds of competition, six rounds to be specific, and we were undefeated the entire way through. At the state championship, we also received top honors. We received the Top Performer Award and the Samuel French Award for an individual by the name of Devin Claudio. Adriana Rodriguez received All-Star Cast, and Bruce Gonzalez, senior, received Honorable Mention All-Star Cast. So, the kids put in a lot of time and effort into this production. It truly takes a village of actors, technicians, and brilliant, like-minded individuals, so once again, thank you so much for your unwavering support. We wouldn't be here without you guys. Thank you.
We are so incredibly proud of you, so can we get the state champs to come take a picture with us?
Yeah, it's perfect, actually. All right, okay, ready? One, two, three, and then take one more. Okay, there we go. Okay, ready? One, two, three, and then one more. One, two. There you go. Thank you for representing Harlingen, doing so well, we feel proud of you, and you're continuous, and I'm not going to credit the Commission for that. And the Commission is also, we're starting now to issue recognition certificates to every individual who comes, instead of just providing one, so this is the first day that we do that because of them. So, we'd like to recognize Adriana Rodriguez. Okay. Carla DiBella. Helen Jennings. Katie Valeskas.
All Pursuing the Arts, though.
Yes. Chloe Gonzalez. Allison Manning. Alexis Midler. Devin. Oh, my gosh. Chloe Fonse. Badina Garcia. Do you see her numbers? I've seen Garza. Sadie Jensen. George Buciaras. Mario Vento. Rokke Abalos.
Okay. Moving on, now that we have done our presentation of proclamations and recognition of awards, we're going to move back on up to citizen communication. Amanda, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am. We have a total of seven, and the first one is Don Ray Leonard. Drainage, speak on drainage.
Okay, there. Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's the son, okay. Don Ray Leonard, District 2. Recent county losses due to disaster flooding was estimated to be over $30 million, and that's just intangible losses. Loss of livestock, damage and loss of property, destruction of crops, loss of land and home values, displacement from one's home, loss of livelihoods, disruption to business and industry, disruption to clean water supplies, disruption to wastewater treatment, electricity, transportation, communications, and education, illness due to waterborne disease, the overwhelming stress, and the fear. For some people, the psychological impacts can be devastating. These losses and disruptions can traumatize victims and their families for years. One young couple decided to forego their beautiful wedding at the urge of their parents, and instead opted to put a nice down payment on a new home. One year later, they were applying for FEMA funds. A young, single mother with two jobs and two children struggled for five years after her divorce, only to be waiting in knee-high water in her rental home. This woman and her children were displaced by the flood. They lost everything. She lost her job. She moved in with her sister and had to start over again. A disabled veteran was flooded out of one area, moved to what he thought was a safer area, only to be flooded out again. Confined to a wheelchair, he was at the mercy of his friends and his family. He lost his independence, and more importantly, he lost his will to fight. Just three Harlingen families out of thousands who have suffered devastating losses, financial, physical, and emotional. This harm was due to recent flooding, because Harlingen has neglected their priorities by not resolving these future, these infrastructure issues for years. Mr. Martinez, and you've seen this plan, was again offered his TRZ drainage project plan for Highway 77 and Commerce Street interchange near the Loop 499. This is an urgent infrastructure project. Updating the wall system is primary. It operates by quickly moving the water out. The suggested holding pond is a secondary solution. I strongly recommend that the city manager and staff submit options to mitigate and organize funding solutions to the TERS One Board and City Commission for this vital drainage project. The citizens and businesses in this area are of low to moderate income and have suffered greatly. Many have never recovered, and yet here we are, nothing in the pipe but a road to nowhere. There is no excuse to delay, because next time could be at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard.
The next one is Israel Aguilar, and the topic is item number 14 on the agenda.
All right, good evening, Mayor Soubira and Commissioners Court. Israel Aguilar, 28136 Cook Lane, Harlingen, Texas, and I'm here to speak on item number 14 on the agenda. So, let me give you a little history on this particular topic with school safety and pertaining to the Harlingen Independent School District. So, for-- simply was not enough to provide care for the school district and to the city simultaneously. That's on record, right? Well, I did follow up. I did exactly what you all asked of me at the time, and I did continuously meet with the school district and the school board. In fact, I even ran for the office of the school board. It's still, it's very sad and concerning that Harlingen still believes that they have it under control. But yet today, I'm here to applaud your effort to require that they continue to develop their police department. Now, I don't know what the interlocal agreement is that you currently will discuss today, because I've never read it. I don't know where to find it. I've asked for it, but I think that's something that is, you know, not publicly available at this time. But from what I know, according to the recent news article, was that it required historically for the district, if they're going to continuously rely on you all for support, is to develop their police department. I'm almost done. I just want to say that I would really appreciate it if you continue to encourage and require for HISD if they will need your resources that they eventually develop their own police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gudde.
The next one is Mr. Jim Young, and it's Tony Butler Golf Course.
Hi. Hello. Jim Young, 1621 Palma Circle East, Harlingen. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm here, as Amanda said, not just on my own behalf, but on behalf of the Golf Advisory Board. We always start where we should, which is thanking the board and the city commission for their steadfast support of the golf course and the investments in the renovations that are actually going to get underway in about six weeks. The mission, of course, I think we all agree, is for Tony Butler to be a self-sustaining and profitable enterprise. Years ago, the course was losing money, and the city, probably rightly at the time, took over the finances. Since then, Jeff Hart has also taken over as Course Pro, and in his time there, the financial health of the golf course has markedly improved year over year. Jeff and his team have done a terrific job in management of the course. But, and this is obvious, but a for-profit enterprise and a city department are fundamentally different things. And this arrangement has the city relating to the golf course as a city department. All the money we make goes right back into city coffers instead of allowing the golf course to reinvest that money into itself and to be able to more easily maintain appropriate and consistent levels of operating capital. Part of the arrangement has also included loans from the city to the golf course, which, again, I think at the time was necessary. But since then, we continue to pay significant interest back to the city on those loans. Now, these circumstances have put limitations on Jeff's ability to run the golf course, to maintain pro shop and concession stand inventories, to effectively manage labor, and to keep up with the improvements and maintenance of the golf course and our aging golf cart fleet. So we think it's time to begin to transition away from this arrangement, which I'm confident was only meant to be temporary in the first place. Restore Tony Butler to a true enterprise fund entity and give Jeff the tools he needs to help us take full advantage of the investments that are being made. We recognize this is a slightly more complex issue than a couple minutes allow, but we'd like to initiate that discussion. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
The next one is Mr. Raymond Reyes, and it's on progress.
Raymond Reyes, as always, here hopefully seeing positive things, changing. It's good that we're supporting small businesses. I think that's needed a lot. Unfortunately, I've been very, very busy dealing with other things, and just barely got a chance to look at the agenda. One thing that came to thought in regards to the schools, I guess that's going to be discussed later on today with this arrangement, whatever the case may be. I live by some schools right there on Antucket. So I constantly see the police presence and everything, but one thing that always comes to mind, and I've seen it actually in real time in other countries, and the country that always comes to mind is Israel. So Israel, little tiny country surrounded by all these terrorist countries, you know, that don't like Israel. I'm wondering why. They don't have those issues at their schools. One thing that I did notice while I was out there, not on top of the guards that they have, they have dogs. Dogs are a lot different than human beings, of course. They don't fear bullets. They can run a lot faster. They can be trained to do certain things. When a person sees a dog that's out to do harm even to a business, because I've had dogs at my business, and I have well-trained dogs at my residence, it's a deterrent because you can deal with a human, but that dog is going to make you think twice. I've seen the studies. In Israel, again, they have dogs. They don't have those issues at their schools. The thing that I have seen is that it always goes back to the cost. Well, you got to maintain an officer, and then you got to maintain the dog and stuff. But factor in what is the cost of human life, especially a child. There's no comparison in my eyes and stuff. I see all these resources being utilized, but still, these tragedies are happening all the time. Again, that's just my opinion. So going back to small businesses, I think we should continue going in the direction that we're doing. I think there's a lot more things that can be done, especially on west side of Jackson. I'm on the board. I always think that there should be more things going on, and we should be included more on stuff that's being developed in and around that area. But if anything else, it takes time. And time, I have. I mean, obviously, I've been here. I haven't gone back to San Antonio, so I do go back and forth. I'm trying to do a big push on other things that I'd like to see happen on the west side of Jackson, and hopefully we can get the support from the community and the commission to continue growth and continue the positive direction that we're going in. So with that ring of the bell, my time is up, and you guys continue doing what you do, and have a good evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Ron Losano.
Ron Losano, District Three. When Jim Young says "true enterprise fund," one of you should be really careful with that phrase. Two planks on her stump speech. Get good restaurants or eldest son would stay, and transparency. At your last meeting, her allies had disparate views. So she says, "I'll review the emails, and then we can handle the issue internally." How is that transparent? It just leaves Harlingenites out. And believe me, just like other Americans, pets are very valuable to Harlingenites. She's an imperial queen, and though you recognize it, you seem to adopt that perspective. The mayor said that we can lower taxes when the time is right, and is arguing the state will help lower taxes by raising the homestead exemption, despite the fact the homestead exemption, like Mr. Aguilar knows, does not apply to city taxes. It only applies to school district taxes. She likes to pull the wool over her eyes. While every cent reduction leads to an approximately $400,000 reduction in the city budget, the mayor claims it will only lead to modest decreases for the average homeowner, as if a modest reduction is not worth fighting for. The mayor touts that she supports small businesses, but this tax raise, which is what a voter approval rate is a tax hike and hurts most businesses the most. While small businesses and homeowners wait for tax reductions that are perpetually over the horizon, the city commission is poised to again raise everyone's taxes while patting themselves on the back as the actual tax rate is reduced by six cents. This hides the fact that appraisals are at historic highs, and the tax rate cut needed to just get down to no new revenue. In other words, keeping actual tax amounts from increasing is a 10-cent reduction, not six. When Senate Bill Two a few years back, the state prohibits the city from raising total tax revenue more than 3.5% from the prior year. This is called the voter approval rate. Anything greater than the 54-cent rate that the commission is proposing would automatically trigger and require a voter oversight. The commission seeks to avoid this oversight and proclaim they are providing tax relief by skirting against the voter approval rate. But now, voters are getting smarter, and you all are about to find out that whiplash. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Losano.
Robert Lefwitch, on skyrocketing taxes.
Robert Lefwitch, not on Andy's Parkwood. Mr. Sausi, I just wanted to ask, does the Robert's Rule of Order...
It's public comments, Left.
It's, I'm just, I just want to point out that if you're going to delay my comments, I want to add time added. The fact of the matter is, Mayor, you just put citizens' communication after the mayor's business, and you set it under the guise, well, this is a one-time or a special deal. You just said it's going to be a monthly occurrence. Are we going to have to endure these crowds if we want to come under public comments? I don't think that Robert's Rules of Orders, which you're basing that on, being able to change the agenda item, supersedes or is over state law, which says that citizens' communication has to be first on the item. If you want these young people that are coming to hear what the citizens of the community are saying to y'all, that's when you need to have people come and talk so that they can hear. That's why you're bringing them to a meeting. If you're bringing them here because you want to rose-color the city, that's not going to cut it. The fact of the matter is, I'm not here for that, but I want to make that observation because every time we have a budget or a tax meeting, you conveniently have an executive session. You make everybody wait when there's a big crowd that are here to oppose the tax increase. You make everybody wait for an hour. But when it's your deal, your deal, you're putting yourself over the citizens, and you put yourself in place. Let's talk about the TERZ, because we're going to talk about some budget items. The fact of the matter is, that is a road to nowhere, and the fact is, the boundaries that you guys are extending in the TERZ, they're all in the county. The TERZ is a reinvestment zone, Commissioner Lopez. I know you argued this.
Robert's Rules of Order require that you direct to the chair and not to the commission individually unless they appoint or they ask you a question.
Okay, the fact of the matter is, I can say this. I'm going to tell you all right now, there is a conflict of interest on the TERZ vote. And I want to read this because this is a city ordinance. It's the city ordinance. I know you read the state law, but it says, "Whereas in the interest of good government, that the conduct of the public business should be accomplished by city officials and city employees that have no personal financial interest in such public business." The fact is, is that I have the right, and I'm going to tell you, if I need to address you, Mayor, I will. There's a conflict of interest, and the city attorney needs to address it, or there's going to be a complaint filed at the PD. Somebody here participated in a discussion and a vote that has to do with that TERZ when they're an employee of the county, and the county is benefiting because they are a business entity. And the state law says that if you make 10% of your income from that other business entity and you discuss or take part in, you are violating state law.
Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch.
Last one is Mr. Desi Martinez.
Well, Desi Martinez, I want to start this thing. I saw someone using that. I'd like to just go on the record on the recommendations by the city manager stating that the Harlingen Comprehensive Plan that the TERZ, $2 million that he's requesting, which will deplete the TERZ-1 fund till 2027, because it's only about $200,000 a year, will completely defund any activity, TERZ activity on the existing boundaries. Want to clarify that? Secondly, I want to respond to his report or his recommendations that the TERZ is the only outlet or avenue for economic growth for that area. Well, according to the comprehensive plan, I give you the information there in front of you. It says that Harlingen and Cameron County and the San Benito Metropolitan, Harlingen-San Benito Metropolitan NPO, and the Texas Department of Transportation, and I give you some examples of what they funded, which requires a minimum partner participation locally. I don't understand, since the 2006, that was developed by him and the former city manager and the committee, as we do comprehensive planning, why didn't apply that to the Tech dot funding? You can see that green project up there, about $10 million, that's going to connect 509 to the new, I call it the new Cancun Bridge, north to south Padre Island, that we pay taxes for as well. And why didn't we do it then if this is such an important... It is important. You know, you're talking to an economist. It's important to the airport. It's important to the port, but it's a county project. All you're doing is extending a 150 or 200-foot right-of-way to build a county road. County roads are funded by Tech dot. And you go through the planning process, Mayor, you go on the committee, the RGV NPO now, so it's the county judge, but why are we taking all the funds from District One, TERZ One? Are we going to do the same for District Five? Are we going to do the same for the other district? And two? I think it's two. Or three? We've got to do this right. We're doing the same thing of catering to politics, and we shouldn't. This money, half of it, belongs to the taxpayers of Harlingen. And the final question is, is the TERZ money allowed under city charter? The revenue part, the 57%, can it be used outside in the county limits? That's a legal question that I hope you answer and the auditor reviews. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anyone else, Amanda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on to...
Commissioner, Mayor wanted to say...
Sure.
If every member of the public feels that there has been any crime or anything, I think it's their moral obligation to report it and make sure that they do talk to the PD or Texas Rangers or whoever, because you never want any unethical action. So if someone in the public does believe that, I welcome it. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. You're out of order, Mr. Lefwitch. You're out of order. Item two, approval of minutes. Item two A, the regular meeting of July 19, 2023. Do we have any changes to the minutes, or if not, can we have a motion to approve?
There's a, I have a correction on page six that I will give to the city secretary where we repeated a sentence. We just need to delete that highlighted.
Okay, sir.
There was a repetition of the sentence.
Okay.
With that correction, I recommend approval of the minutes. And the final question is, is the TERS money allowed under city charter? The revenue part, the 57%, can it be used outside in the county limits? That's a legal question that I hope you answer and the auditor reviews. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anyone else, Amanda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on to...
Commissioner, Mayor wanted to say...
Sure.
If every member of the public feels that there has been any crime or anything, I think it's their moral obligation to report it and make sure that they do talk to the PD or Texas Rangers or whoever, because you never want any unethical action. So if someone in the public does believe that, I welcome it. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. You're out of order, Mr. Lefwitch. You're out of order. Item two, approval of minutes. Item two A, the regular meeting of July 19, 2023. Do we have any changes to the minutes or if not, can we have a motion to approve?
There's a, I have a correction on page six that I will give to the city secretary where we repeated a sentence. We just need to delete that highlighted.
Okay, sir.
There was a repetition of the sentence.
Okay.
With that correction, I recommend approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have item three, the consent agenda, items A through C. Is anyone needing to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. If I may, I would like to remove three A from the consent agenda for further discussion.
Okay.
And three C, please.
And three C. Wonderful. Are we okay with a motion to entertain the consent agenda, item B, be approved? Do you want that removed?
Oh, not removed. I wanted to, yes, C, I want it removed, yeah.
Okay, C has already been removed.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve item three B?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item three B passes. And now we're moving on to item three A, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading, amending the City of Harlingen Ordinance 06-31, expanding the boundaries and approving the amended project plan and finance plan for the Harlingen TERS Number One. We'll open up that for discussion. Commissioner Morales?
Yes, obviously, there's some opposition to this. And at last meeting, I opposed it. What we have to keep in mind at the last meeting, which was what, last week, two weeks ago? There was only, it was, it just pretty made quorum. So I would like to make sure that the other commissioners, Commissioner Kinsley and Commissioner Pittis also participate in the vote, whether they want to proceed with this or they want to table this for further evaluation. I don't, I strongly believe that this should be, that these funds should be used in another area other than providing this to this county road. By the numbers that I looked at, we're looking at 70% is the city's cost and 30% is the county's. And that is from the material that we received on our packets. Unless there's something else. Prior to this, a week ago, it was, yeah, it was the same, it was 80/20. And Gabe said it was 60/40. I don't see 60/40, I see 30, 70/30 to where the city is going to pay for this. That's a lot of funds that's going to go out there to that project. And when we first discussed this a while back, we had plenty of residents from that area that opposed it. Apparently, they didn't get the word that this was going on. Otherwise, I'm sure we would have some residents opposing this other than the people that just spoke up against it.
Mayor, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Morales, you said almost a quorum or barely a quorum. It's like being pregnant, you are, you aren't. We had a quorum. No almost go into the calculation. The other thing is, you were at the TERS meeting. And before the TERS meeting, you went to Amanda and you got the agenda. You printed it yourself and you brought it up to a person you were sitting two seats from because he couldn't wait for the agenda. And then you were at that meeting and it's not a road to nowhere. What you guys don't understand is, just before COVID, we had a major aerospace manufacturing company coming to Harlingen on the east side of the airport. And they do stuff in big ways for Boeing. And then COVID hit, international and national travel plummeted, people weren't flying. Boeing shut down making airplanes. And this company said, we're not coming to Harlingen. So this isn't a pipe dream, this is a reality. And then you also heard at the TERS meeting that we cannot have Techstat take that road because Techstat's not accepting roads. And we have to do it along with the county to do it. And so this is a valid use of that property. And if you don't dream, you will die. And the city has to plan for the future, for the industrial complex south of Grimes Road and for the airport, for companies that want to come in, aerospace companies and other companies that want to come in. They need access, they need access to the Port of Harlingen for things. They need access four-lane highway for big trucks and things to move together and Ed Carey to go up to the interstate to deliver things. And this is not a pipe dream, this is reality. And if you don't plan for the future, you're damned not to have a future.
Mayor, I'd like to point out to the commission that this particular line item or action item does not allocate money to the Grimes Road project. It simply lists this as being eligible for funding in TERS Number One. So this item doesn't transfer any money to any project. It just simply adds a list that says Grimes Road to the TERS project list. Right now, there's about seven or eight projects on that. This is just another one that'll be added. There's no money being transferred to TERS right now, that'll come later. And at that point, you can actually vote to either grant the money for the TERS project or deny it. But this is just simply listing it as a project in the TERS project list.
Correct. And if I understand correctly, this makes, this is a vote that it is an eligible project. Then it would come back to the commission, the commission would vote at that time and it would need to go to the county and their commission would also have to vote on that. Is that correct?
Well, if this vote is affirmative for the project, then we have to go to the county and then they have to agree to amend the boundaries, the project plan and the finance plan. Once that, and if they do that, then we have to come back to the commission with an agreement with the city and the county to pay for it. That's when the project gets funded, so.
And then the way this got here was, the TERS meeting met, the TERS group met and it was voted with one negative vote, who you parrot as words exactly. And other than that, it passed everyone else past this. So it already went through the TERS committee.
Is there any other discussion? You're out of order, this is only for the commission. Thank you.
That's official request.
That's okay. Yes, so we're going to decline that request. Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch. Is there any other discussion from the commission? Okay, so if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion?
Some moved to accept A, three A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fettis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Moving on to item C, consideration and possible action to approve the installation of speedhumps on the following streets. This was placed on the agenda by Commissioner Fettis and Morales. And I believe, we'll start with you, Commissioner Fettis.
I just wanted to add another street to that that I just got recently. And that was, I would request on Seagull Lane, the speedhumps on Seagull Lane from Spoonbill to Curly Lane.
Okay, so when you say seagull, you mean the bird, the seagull?
Yeah, it's a street, it's a street in my district.
Okay.
Yeah, so speedhumps on Seagull Lane from Spoonbill to Curly Lane.
Now, I wanted to add two on 12th Street.
Okay, so two on 12th Street for Commissioner Lopez? Usually Craig's not here for me to yell at him, so I'm not sure.
And while we're adding.
Who to send it to? Okay, thank you.
My last one, I have, I already sent it below us. Seventh Street between, I'm sorry, Davis between Third and Seventh Street and Austin between 13th and Morgan.
I think we have to amend the budget to include more money for speedhumps.
So...
Unless you want to withdraw those requests for speedhumps.
So if I got these done, then there's now eight. Is my math correct?
Yes.
So did you get that, Josh? Okay, wonderful. With those requests from the commissioners, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have item four, public hearing and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading, amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Article 10, Section 111-275, by adding definitions, Section 111-280, special sign categories, permitted and prohibited signs by allowing wind flag signs and feather flag signs with limitations and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Mayor, City Commission, I gave a presentation about two months ago about this proposal to approve feather flag signs and wind flag signs. It was, the commission was receptive, but I was asked to go before the Small Business Board, which I did about a month ago. And the Small Business Board was very receptive to the ordinance, but they asked for limitations on the feather flag signs, to not just allow them indefinitely. They set up a committee of the Small Business Board, so I met with the committee. So the committee came up with what you have in your ordinance today, which is to allow feather flag signs as a temporary permit for 30 days, up to four times a year. So that's the main change from the previous.
And will, how will businesses be notified of this?
I can work with the Communications Department to get like a public service announcement to get the word out that we will now allow feather flag signs with limitations, right? And they have to come in and get a permit. There's the waiver of liability form that they have to sign. So we can explain that in the public service announcement. So once, if the ordinance is adopted, we will work out the logistics and then we will start seeing feather flag signs, but with limitations, we will not see them.
And the first go around, then you'll be kind and gentle and let people know it's a new ordinance?
Yes, a brand-new ordinance that will allow them. But not, in other communities, they're just allowed, they're not regulated. Here, we're going to allow them, but with limitations.
So I'll just say right now, Commissioner, we don't allow it at all. So there, this is a way for them to start being able to request a permit to have them out. So we shouldn't really have anybody that's in violation since it's going to be a new opportunity for them to be able to promote their business. I did have a question when I was reviewing this the other day. It's on page 39. It says, "Wind flags on item G signs shall be allowed in private property without having to obtain sign permits as long as connected to a permanent pole structure. Commercial or institutional properties with a building shall have a total allowance of two square feet for wind flag signs per total linear foot." Wind flag, it says on a permanent, is this like a big sign? Not a wind flag?
They're normally on metal poles, but sometimes they're attached to buildings, right? But they're normally on flag poles, right?
Okay, so these are the permanent structures and you are going to, are they, there's no limit?
Yeah, so we will allow them, but with limitations because at the Small Business Board, they ask for limitations. So basically, the limitation will be two square feet for every, for each linear foot of building visible from a public street. So that gives a lot of leeway for businesses to set up a wind flag signs.
Okay, because I remember that was that discussion during that one meeting. So I wanted to make sure that that was taken care of. Okay, are there any other questions from the commission? No? Okay, with no questions?
Sorry, one last one. One of the photos you used is a car dealership in my district off of the loop. I just wanted to ask, there was language in the new ordinance about size of those wind flags. It talks about, it's your new definition G, six G. It talks about commercial or institutional properties with a building shall have a total allowance of two square feet of wind flag signs per total linear foot of a building visible from a public street. It wouldn't affect that business?
No, no, that business should be fine.
So essentially, like you're talking about, when you're going to, in Florida, they have that Audi dealership that has a massive flag, right? You can see it from miles away. You're saying that based on the amount of room that dealership takes on the frontage, that would then dictate how big that flag could be?
Yeah, and basically, the two-square foot that you have in your ordinance, in your packet, is based on the huge barack and wind flag sign that got installed in front of Toyota. So we did a calculation so that that wind flag sign can stay, right? So yeah, most businesses will be allowed a lot of wind flag signs if desired, just not super excessive, right? But that one business should be fine.
That's my last question. Thank you very much, Javier. And thank you to the Small Business Committee for looking into this.
Yeah, they were a nice group.
At this time, since there's no other discussion, we'll open it up to a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance?
Hello, my name is, oh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. My name is David Cabazos, I'm a small business owner. We just basically opened like seven days ago.
Congratulations.
Success.
Thank you, it's called Precam Nutrition. We're promoting a healthier lifestyle, protein drinks, energy drinks. And so, yes, those flags would really help us small business owners. You know, I did the permit for my sign, you know, up in the building, but still, you know, we're not being seen. And so that would help us succeed in our businesses and I believe it'd help other businesses succeed as well as Harlingen. So I appreciate you, your time and thank you all.
I'm curious, where are you located?
Where, yeah.
I'm sorry, 1548 North 77 Sunshine Street.
Yeah, this is free advertisement.
And that is near...
First time here, so, never been in a building like this.
You're near where?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
You're on North 77 Sunshine Strip, but more or less?
There's a Cricket Laundromat in that plaza before Valley Radio. Trek, Trek just opened up. That's how I found out about this because Trek...
You had Dick off as a play?
Uh, no.
By the Trek Bike Store.
By the old skating arena.
Yes, yes, about a block before that. And that's how I found out about the flags because I know they got a big fine and I was thinking about doing that, not knowing that it was, you know, prohibited. And so that's why I'm here to speak about it, so, but, thank you all.
And tell us, when, what are your hours?
Oh, my hours are 6:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Saturdays is 7 to 5 and we're closed on Sundays.
Wonderful, much success.
Yeah, thank you all, God bless you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance?
Hi, my name is Delia Cabazos, I'm in District One. I'd like to know, like Commissioner Mesmar just said, this is relaxing a little bit on the first, when we first get this out, if it passes, who is to actually enforce that ordinance? I'd like to know. Because I know you said it's up to three times a year or however many times, but I'd like to know who's going to enforce that afterwards.
The way it will work is they will come in to the Building Inspections Department to get a sign permit. So it will be for 30 days. And so we will, court enforcement will be looking out. So we're going to have to have like a calendar invite to ourselves to pay them a visit after the 30 days to remove the feather flag sign. But they can, they're allowed for a year, yeah.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance?
Well, as that Ron Wilson on District Three, as that young lady that just preceded me indicated last week, it's all perspective. You heard Javier say that, limitations. What do limitations mean? There's absolutely no explanation of what limitations are, except there's going to be PSAs in the future. So again, when other Javietas come up without a budget, y'all don't care about money because it's only taxpayers' money. And as Mr. Mesmar just indicated, free advertising, it goes beyond that. You heard encouragement to patronize a certain particular private enterprise, even if there's competitors. Our society is built on competition. Y'all shouldn't be favoring one business over another by telling the public to go and patronize a certain business. But those kind of ethic lapses that Dan was referring to, you can't see them when they're so close to them. So again, I have no idea what the limitations are, other than what he just said. So again, I have no idea what the limitations are, other than what he just said. There's only four allowed per, on an annual basis, for 30 days. As the skimpy notes indicate, I was here when in 2010, they prohibited these signs. This is, this is America. Every, every week, I have to come up here and remind you all what country you're in. Y'all are trying to be so totalitarian in your approach, and yet, can any one of you all tell me what limitations this signs refer to? What are these limitations? Does anybody know? No? We are, we're all like dunces. It's all going to be perspective. This is no, no way to run a business or the city government. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against? And I'll remind the folks in the, in the audience, it's to speak for or against the adoption of the ordinance.
Hi, Beverly Loftus, Harlingen, EDC. We just wanted to speak in favor for the adoption. We did meet with the business committee and other businesses in the community who really feel that this is needed. Even with the limitations that are being recommended or proposed, this would go a long way to help them market their business in front of the store, where maybe they're not seen because of other businesses, or just impediments that may keep them from having their business be seen. So we are in approval for this.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one else here to speak, we will close the public hearing. I will just add, before we have the city attorney read the caption, that we, the Small Business Advisory Committee is made up of small businesses from our community, and they actually were the ones that brought to our attention, which I was really surprised. I thought, you know, small businesses were going to say, yes, give them, you know, 10 flags, 20 flags, but they said they wanted to make sure that our city remains beautiful, and to ensure that there weren't too many flags, and that there were some limitations. As business owners themselves, they wanted to make sure that the city of Harlingen remains beautiful, and gave us examples of other communities and other cities with lots of of those feather flags, and they were not in favor of that. And so I think it's important to listen to the small business community, because they're the ones that, that know mostly how to, what's going to impact their business, and what's going to help promote their, promote their business. So, having said that, I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
In ordinance amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Section 10, Article 10, Section 111-275, by adding definition, Section 111-280, special sign categories permitted and prohibited signs by allowing wind flags and feather flag signs with limitations and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5, public hearing to consider possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential multifamily district to planned development district for an open-air food court townhomes with a 10-foot front yard setback and parking lot uses for 4.5206 acres out of Block 5 of the south H Bell subdivision, and lots 1 through 3, 7 through 9, 11, 13, 14, 16, 19, 20, and 24 through 28 of the McLary subdivision located at the northwest corner of M Street and Fillmore Avenue.
Mayor City Commissioners, this is a proposed development as a mixed uses at the northwest corner of Fillmore and M Street. Right now, the zoning is M2 multifamily residential. This is aerial photograph of the project. A few months ago, you approved the rezoning of the lots to the north, so that's the second phase of the, of the same developer. But in this one, he's proposing a mixed uses, and so that's why he applied for a planned development district. And so this is the site plan for the second phase of his project, which is townhouses, 42 townhouses located on the southwest side, and an open-air food, food market located here with a proposed playground in the middle, and then parking lots here for the open-air food, food market here, and then additional townhouses. Townhouses, they're, they're like individual homes, but there's no side setbacks. The houses are against each other. So there's like a firewall that keeps, in case of a fire, from going from one, from one townhouse to the other. They're very popular in other parts of the country. So these individual homes with no side setbacks, the houses are against each other. Photos of the property, in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So this is a rendering of a similar project in another city. Also, it's showing, he's proposing a reduced front setbacks of 10 feet. So this is a project that is kind of similar to what his, the developer is proposing. So it's individual homeownership, ideal for a new family trying to get started as a homeowner or somebody retiring, and they want to downsize. This, this works very well for them. And these are the two subdivisions next to each other. The two subdivisions with the aerial. And this is the proposed floor plan for the townhouses, and the proposed rendering for the individual townhouses. So this went before the planning and zoning commission, and they approved, no one spoke in opposition, and it was approved unanimously during their August 9th meeting.
Javier, this sounds like a great project. I only have one question. Is there going to be, I couldn't tell from our packets, sidewalks for people to walk to and from?
Yes. There are existing sidewalks already. That was a recent, I think it was a city project. So there's sidewalks on the west side of M Street already in place.
Tell me about flood control.
So they're proposing a 50-year drainage, so they're in full compliance with our drainage requirements. So you have a memo from your city engineer saying approval. So they're proposing some detention areas, and then for the water to connect to the drainage system to the, to the south side.
That's in your district, what others? Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission? No?
And I don't have any renderings for the open-air food market, but it's going to be, it's going to be nice. It's going to be very different and very nice.
And I know what, from what I read, it's going to be permanent structures, not food courts?
Correct.
Really nice, up, you know, modern area for that, for that area, with built-in kitchens, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And then for renting, for renting the spaces, yeah.
Aye. I saw that.
What's the timeframe?
That's a question for the developer. He's here.
So what we'll do is we'll open it up for a public hearing, and if anyone wishes to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance, and we'll start with Mr. Carranza.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Julio Carranza, not a resident, but I'm here to develop, we've been developing here multifamily, and it's going great. This is one of probably three more developments that we have coming up, and this is going to be really nice. It's going to be gated. I don't think we mentioned that. And in the center, on the detention area, we're going to put some artificial grass, and it's going to be really, really nice. There's going to be a sidewalk connection to the outdoor food and retail park. We want to work with the university and start some type of incubator program, so we can help small businesses as well. And what was the other question?
Time frame.
Well, Javier? No, I'm just kidding. I mean, I don't know, as soon as, I mean, we're ready to go, pretty much. I guess the, first, we're going to start with the townhome, because there's going to be more demand once there's townhomes there. You know, we want to build up the momentum, right? It's phased out, but we want to go as fast as possible, obviously. We're pretty much with the percent done with the plans. Once we get approval here, it goes to final plat approval for the planning and zoning, and as soon as the city approves it, we will break ground. I'm thinking October, maybe, November.
I grew up in that area, grew up in those vicinis right off that area, so that, that area has been empty for a long time, so thank you for developing it.
Yeah, we're excited about it. We really want to do one of, you know, one-of-a-kind thing here in Harlingen. We were going to put the, the most amount of resources possible, and we do want to work in conjunction with the chambers, the cultural arts. I want input from the community, so that everybody has just a little bit of say-so, have everybody, the community as a stakeholder, pretty much.
So once you're done with this one, I go to Mr. Five on the other side of the screen.
You know, we're very interested in continuing to come over here. Yes, we, and you know, Javier has been, I don't want to, you know, say, because he's here, but he's been instrumental, instrumental, answering after hours. I was out of the country, he answers Zoom calls, whatever. You got a, you got a soldier working for you guys. But any other questions about the development?
We're excited for you, and you know, I echo the commissioner's statements here that, you know, that, that area's been vacant for a long time, and to see it, you know, breathe life into it and provide opportunities for that, the folks that are living in that area. And really, you're right, I mean, that's the perfect spot.
It is.
People drive through there every single day. I drive through there back and forth multiple times per day, so I think you're going to have great visibility. We're excited. I think that it's a wonderful opportunity for an incubator-type setup for a food court area for folks that want to get into that business, so we're excited that you're going to be a partner here in Harlingen.
Thank you. Just little things, we want to make sure that in that area, we're going to have some, you know, fiber optics, so people can work there, very top-end Wi-Fi, lighting, some type of warming capabilities when it's cold, some type of cooling capabilities when it's hot. We're not at that point yet, but that's what we're going to do. Surround sound, the whole nine yards, you know, real nice, hold events there and things of that nature. But we do need your support, 100%.
Well, you'll have a ceremony groundbreaking that's going to happen really quick.
Yep. Thank you.
So thank you. I mean, I hope it does. These guys still have to prove it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Harlingen, EDC. We just wanted to give support for Mr. Carranza. He's done a lot in our community, and he constantly is reaching out to different partners in the community to look for ways to make Harlingen better, and we definitely need this type of housing. I think it gives younger folks opportunity to find homes that maybe fit their style a little bit more, and so anything we can do to attract the different lifestyles and ages would be great. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Having no one else to speak, we will close the public hearing at this time, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
In ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the city of Harlingen, to rezone from residential multifamily M2 district to planned development PD district for an open-air food court townhomes with 10-foot front yard setback and parking lot uses for 4.5203 acres of Block 5 of the S H Bell subdivision, and lots 1 to 3, 7 to 9, 11, 13, 14, 16, 19, and 20, and 24 to 28 of the McLary subdivision located on northwest corner of M Street and Fillmore Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Carranza. Item 6, discussion and approve, to approve a request to amend the thoroughfare plan, a component of the comprehensive plan by removing the proposed extension of Hancock Drive as a major collector road south of Primeta Road to Wilson Road, and.
Yes, Mayor, as you know, the EDC got a grant recently for infrastructure improvements for their Roosevelt subdivision. So that's the subdivision that is getting the grant for, to help us with the water and the sewer and the drainage and the streets. During the review of the subdivision, it came, it came to light that there's a road, there's a roadway in the Thorfer Plan that is a proposed extension of Hancock Drive, and it runs right through the middle of the subdivision. It really negatively affects the project. City engineer and myself and the EDC officials met, and we all agreed that that's a roadway that's, that really needed. It's a quarter mile from, from Expressway 77. So it's something that got drawn when the comprehensive plan was drafted in 2015, but staff feels that it's not necessary, so we're proposing to remove it from the Thorfer Plan so that it will not affect the EDC subdivision project.
And I did see that we had a letter in there from the EDC with that request. Is there any discussion for the commission? Okay, at this time, we will open up the public hearing.
So right now, it's just discussion?
Oh, sorry. I just got in a roll with the public hearings.
Sorry, yeah, notice. This one and the next one is just discussion.
Okay.
So if you are in agreement, I will start the process to remove that roadway from the Thorfer Plan, so there's public, I need to advertise public hearings and notify the property owners. I don't foresee any problems during the public hearings.
And this is needed, right, to take advantage of the grant that we just got?
Well, yeah, it's, it's only, that proposed roadway is only a quarter mile from Expressway 77. It's not really needed as a north-south corridor.
So what you're trying to do is interject common sense.
That's right.
I like that. Okay, wonderful. So then I think that there's a consensus on the commission, is that right?
Yes.
You want to move forward? Yes? Okay. So thank you for that. Moving on to item 7, discussion to approve a request amending the code of ordinances to allow solar farms with the granting of an SUP in certain zoning districts.
So this one is also just for discussion purposes, and so we have this company that is interested in developing solar farms in properties east of the, east of the airport or southeast of the airport. So these are the properties where they want to develop these solar farms. They're not allowed at all right now in our zoning ordinance. So right now, they're, a solar farm is not allowed.
And this is like adjacent to the new battery facility?
Yes. The new, the battery storage that was approved a few months ago, this right here.
Right. Okay, so they could make juice and transmit it 100 feet?
Well, it's related. It's getting, in this, in this case, it's getting the energy from the sun and then putting the energy back in the grid. But right now, in the ordinance, it's not allowed at all. So it's, so the company has some slides, the officials from the company are here, and they have some slides that they would like to present to you. The airport director has, he has, he provided a letter, which we handed out.
Did you hand it out?
No, I have it right here.
Could you hand it out to the commission? What is going to hand, that's a letter from the Valley International Airport, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Right. And they're recommending that if there's coordination, they support the project.
Thank you.
Officials from the company are here, and they have some slides that they would like to present to the commission if it's okay with you.
Sure. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Porter. I'm the CEO and founder of Clean Footprint, we're a solar development company, and I'm glad that I have slides. I would just ask, is this, excellent. Yep, so what we do is we go from different state markets, and we find properties that are properly situated near substations, which allow us to do larger solar farms, normally in the 20 to 40-acre type size, which is what we're, what we're putting forward to the city of Harlingen. And what we would like to do is, first of all, speak in favor of passing ordinance that would allow us to at least come in for a special use permit, and then that would allow us to then come in for a building permit. And tonight, we're talking about that potential code change. We've had quite a bit of experience doing this in other communities. We like to point out that in, in many ways, there are things that often aren't talked about, but are important. In Texas, as you all know... In Texas, as you all know, we had a large issue with a weather event that knocked out a lot of the power, and it was a disaster. And one of the things that solar and plus this battery project, what it can do is it can add resiliency to your local grid. Our projects are designed to produce local energy that is then used locally. So this is not a transmission project or projects that we're putting forward here to the city. And so that's important. So between your battery system that you all have approved and solar farms at our scale, which are, again, much smaller than transmission-level projects, we can build resiliency long-term. We would be part of a process of having Harlingen be able to handle a natural disaster more easily. I live in Florida. We had a really bad hurricane that hit us in the southwest portion. It knocked out power, erased some towns. But there was a town inland that you might not have heard about, but it was on a solar microgrid. And after that hurricane, that was the only town within a very large distance that still had power for its residents. So that is the type of long-term gains we can make working together. This is, again, getting specific on projects, but really what we're talking about is just allowing these in general tonight. But these are the locations. One is at, basically, at the foot of the runway, and the director of the airport put a nice letter, I think, in front of you. I've read the letter. We are absolutely team players. We have to make sure that this is not any type of hazard for the flying public, and that would be something we would work through with the airport authorities. One of the things, we recommend that you consider charging, but I saw in the notes from the planning and zoning board that they were questioning why we brought that up. It's not very important to us to necessarily deal with that, but I do think as a city that's obviously wanting to do new things and create business, you're going to, at some point, you'll want to think about how are you going to regulate charging stations such as you would regulate a gas station? I do want to, we're getting into that business along with our solar and battery storage, and so I just recommend that that be something that you all consider in the future, but that is not necessary for these two developments that we're looking at tonight. This one, as Javier pointed out a little earlier, is also close to the airport. It's a perfect situation in that it is very flat. We have access to three-phase power, which we need. The conductor strength is very good, and we're close enough to the substation to make these projects viable. And obviously, we need the cooperation and support of the city, but we also need the cooperation and support of the utility, or then they can also hold us back. In some cases, that does happen. So, again, to the ask, we're asking you to consider amending your zoning code to allow for small, what we consider small, solar facilities as a permitted use or by special use permit, which I believe is in the package before you. The solar industry continues to grow, as you all know. It is, it is becoming more and more inexpensive. Every kilowatt hour we produce from when I first started the company 13 years ago, kilowatt hour of energy from solar was about triple of what it is today. It is a, it's amazing. The technology keeps getting better. We need less and less land to produce more power, because the power of each individual solar panel is getting more watts per square foot. And so, that's exciting in that I could see a day when power, electricity starts going down. We believe we're part of reducing the long-term cost to consumers and businesses of energy which they will need in order to make their business or their home more affordable. So, even though this is a small step for the City of Harlingen, it's a big step in the fact that we are in an energy revolution. We believe solar is part of that. Texas has always been a leader in energy, and that is witnessed by all the different types of energy you have. So we are here to ask you, please, to consider allowing for these, again, these smaller-scale solar farms. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
Will this be static, or will it be on a motor for like 145, 150-degree sweep?
Yeah, so what, you're, great question. And so what we're talking about is, will it be fixed tilt and not move at all? Or will it be sort of on a north-south tracker? It's what we call a single-axis tracker. Now, normally, we do single-axis trackers because we can produce about 20 to 25% more energy per acre that we have of solar. And really, it's going to come down to working with the airport. I think Director of Aviation, Mary Esterly, had pointed out, we have to make sure that this works for the airport. So, I don't know. Normally, we do single-axis trackers, but I'm not sure what the FAA study will show.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I can't answer you directly on that.
And then second, legally, do you have to sell to the grid, or you could sell to that battery station? You used the word a micro...
Well, we love Texas deregulated market. We can sell different ways through the grid. So, indeed, the, now, if I were the battery owner, which I'm not in this case, I would want to buy low and sell higher. So they're going to want to probably buy energy from your wind installations in the area, maybe from us at different times of the day where there's too much energy, and that's what a battery farm is perfect for. They can use all the energy that's not being used, and then they can re-release it into the peak times of the day, in the morning when you wake up and start turning on everything, and then when people come home from work and they start turning on everything, washers, dryers, all that.
What brought you to Harlingen?
That's a good question. Again, I really think the main thing is that it is a deregulated market. It allows for developers of our scale to be able to come in, and if we can get the permission from the City of Harlingen, then we're able to develop and build these projects at a profit.
Is it going to be one job, one maintenance job per site, or one maintenance job for both sites?
I would say it's probably, in general, one to handle both. These are not big job generators, other than construction work, which only lasts a certain amount of time. I used to be an elected official, and I know you have to balance the budget. One of the great things about solar in this case is that, once we install it, there's very little city services that are necessary. We don't require a lot of police, sewer, water, none of that. And, but what you do is you gain from the tax revenue and, in my opinion, the lowering of energy costs over time for your citizens and for your businesses. So, in other words, you have the benefit of a large asset, a valuable asset being built, and the tax revenue that comes from it without all the normal city services having to be provided. Therefore, if you look at it from a profit and loss, you get a good chunk of tax revenue with very little expense from the city service point of view.
I know, excuse me, you have already answered a couple of my questions. One, you need about 20 to 40 acres. Could you do more, and at a different location?
Yes, we would like to. We often, when we have good relations with a city, or a county, or a town, we find that, okay, they want us here, you know, that's really why I'm here tonight. It's just to see, does the City of Harlingen want us to be here? And if the answer is yes, then I'll have my analysts look at other substations in the area, and, you know, and if there are good sites that fit the requirements of hopefully the new zoning, then we would look at that. I think, I think the way it's set up is maybe we're looking at industrial-zoned property. So, wherever there would be industrial-zoned property, is that true, Javier?
Yeah, can you go back to the map, the street map? Yeah, yeah. And so what street is that east-west?
This is Grimes.
Grimes. And this is what we voted on earlier.
Excuse me, I want to say, Marv, can you pop up here real quick, please? Marv, as you've taught me, every question, as it relates to the airport, somehow is related to the FAA.
It always tends to be, yes.
So I know in the past, there's been issues about buildings in, like, your flight path area, right? It can't be over a certain height or whatever. What is more or less the height restrictions for this area? So like, example, if I wanted to throw up a massive Tesla factory, would I, I'll be, there'd be a certain height restriction on that, right?
Yeah, I think it's hard for me to say exactly, but I think you'd be sitting somewhere between 60 and 78 some feet in height. It's, it would be in our overlay zone as well. So, when you look at those things, you don't really want those in the concrete structures and things in flight paths, you know? But, you know, solar, like I stated in my letter, is something working together that we may be able to do because it provides a benefit to the airport to, you know, where land can't be utilized for a lot of other things. It can be utilized to act as a buffer between, you know, the airport and incompatible land use. So that's, that's why I stated in my letter that there is a benefit to the airport, for the future of the airport, to have these properties be utilized for something that would be compatible with air...
And sir, you're talking six, seven-foot-high solar arrays, right? Six, seven-foot-high?
We say 15 feet and down.
Okay.
Plenty of room.
And Beverly, would you mind popping up here a little? Beverly, as you know, I'm very big about, we don't have very much land in Texas. We can annex, just like we used to before. And so, whatever land we use for these types of projects, I want to make sure the best use for that land. And do you believe, or does the EDC, I know you're only a representative of the EDC, believe that this is the best use of our land comparatively? I know, within the restrictions that the FAA boxes us into...
Yeah, so based on actually what Marv said too, we do think it's a good use. We did meet with the company prior to them requesting the SUP, and we also made sure, like, they were on board, that Marv was going to be on board as well. Depending on the utilities in that area, it may be harder to get utilities on the larger of the acreage, and even on the front where the airport landing strip basically ends. Marv made a good point, is it's, you know, is, how usable is that land? And so it's a good opportunity to put something that's going to generate taxes for the city without the low, you know, the higher service fees. But, yeah, so we are in a kind of approval of this. We're in support of it.
Thank you, yes, I appreciate it.
Is there any other, any other questions, comments?
Mayor, there's no action on this item, but they just want authorization to proceed forward with the change.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Appreciate it and look forward to working with you all soon.
Thank you. Item 8, consideration and possible action to select the highest-ranking firm and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for professional services pursuant to RFQ number 2023-16, Commerce Street corridor redesign.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. For the record, Anna Hernandez, I'm the Special Projects Director. On June 19th, we, well, the city went out for requests for proposals for the redesign of Commerce Street. We received a total of six responses, and these responses were evaluated by a committee, or evaluation committee comprised of city staff. And we have included the preliminary rankings and scoring of all six proposals. The top three respondents were CSE, Cop Finley, and Hanson. And so, the ask before you, or the reason why we're bringing this item is to either request for you to select the highest-ranking firm and authorize the city manager to execute a contract or begin negotiations and execute a contract, or the other option is to petition for these three top-scoring... I'm sorry, I'm getting tongue-twisted.
It's to bring back the other three firms and have them make a presentation directly to the City Commission.
Yes.
So, we could either authorize a top-ranked firm and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with them, or if you want to evaluate the three top firms yourselves, you can. Not today at a separate meeting.
I trust you people to do your job that you're hired to do.
Anna, on your ranking yourself for Cop Finley, you gave them a 20 out of 30 points for their project approach. What was your concern there?
Not so much a concern, it's just that one of the big things that we need from this project is kind of that innovation, and so for them, I think it was very traditional, the approach that they were proposing. And so, they obviously have the qualifications, they have, I don't know if you noticed, but the experience and the qualifications. They have a very strong, you know, set of transportation individuals or transportation experience, and that was one of their strengths. But that will be the one takeaway from that proposal, that, you know, it was a project approach. And in fact, I think staff recommendation will be for you guys to listen to those three presentations so you can, you know, learn about their perspective, because I feel like at the end of the day, it's the project approach that is going to be the deciding factor between those three. They're all qualified, and they have a good, you know, team put together.
Luis, can you pop up here?
Good evening. Luis Vargas, for the record, City Engineer. Yes, sir.
On your, the way you rated CSE, right, you gave them a 15 out of 20 for firm capability and past experience. As you know, I'm always worried about past experiences with these companies. Did you have any concerns with them?
No, not at all. Past experience has been great. Was it 15 out of 20, I believe?
Yeah, you gave them a 15 out of 20.
And that was...
They're ranked number one, and then the one I asked you about, Anna, Cop Finley, they're ranked number two, so...
Yeah, I guess that category has two items, right? Past experience and capabilities, right? Past experience has been great, no issues at all. It was, I guess, project capabilities that was, that was the reason of the deduction, really. That I thought I... That I thought I see, I saw more capabilities than other firms, right? As far as a road project, you know, a right-of-way reconstruction. As far as capabilities with CSC for drainage, they've been excellent, right? And it's hard for me to, you know, say that with the engineering community, but you've asked, so I respond, you know, with transparency, so.
So even though we'll bring in the top three, no one's a clear, at least in my mind, a clear firm, right? Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I got a question. How much time is the presentation going to be?
I mean, it's up to you. In the past, we have done 15-minute presentations, five-minute questions, it could be less.
Okay.
It's really up to you how long they need to be.
We normally go about 30, no more than 45 minutes per firm. But I think in 30 minutes, you can have a 15-minute presentation, allow for maybe five to 10 minutes of question and answers, and then move on to the next one.
I have a question for you, Anna, and I was, I was looking at this last night in preparation and, and the scoring process, and I was looking at yours specifically. I really value your opinion, especially on this, on this project. And, and I see the criteria and the firm capability and familiarity with the applicable rules and regulations would seem to be a more of a report card, right, on the firm, past experience with them, and if they're competent or, you know, their abilities to do the job. And so I saw this J or G DJ Engineering and their, their score was, was really low, especially in those two areas. And then I moved over to Oscar, and he's kind of, he scored them really high. So I'm trying to figure out before, if we're going to do this, this like workshop to see the others, I'm a little concerned of leaving other people out. I don't, I don't understand the, the big difference in the, in the scoring. So can you, can you just?
Well, I can speak from my experience reviewing the, that particular group. And to me, it was, so the response, they may be qualified, they might be knowledgeable, but based on their response, it kind of addressed other issues that we just didn't need to kind of focus on for this project. And so I think they have a lot of involvement with the RTB and PO, they're very knowledgeable at the process, and so they kind of mentioned a lot of that. And so that wasn't really necessarily something that will be beneficial to us. We're not looking for that. We understand how that works. And so I think for me, that was kind of the main reason. I will say that in terms of rules and regulations, that's really important. It wasn't necessarily just to kind of just get automatic points. This is a ground-funded project, this is the FHWO who we're dealing with, not Tech Stop. And so that requires a lot of knowledge of, you know, federal regulations, and that, that really matters. So we really need to kind of bring on board people that are going to, you know, they have the expertise, that they have worked with FHWA before and the regulations. And we can't be just telling them what they need to focus. They need to tell us, you know, how to stay compliant, pretty much.
So, I'm, sorry.
Please continue, please.
So in that same vein, I, I was thinking, and I was looking over your, your scoring of Tedsy, and since they're in transportation, I just assumed they'd be much higher, but they scored low also. Was that, is that the same reasoning behind it? Like more fluff and not answering the question?
Right, so, I mean.
That's what lawyers don't like, I'm just saying, right?
Yeah, it was a lot of that. Maybe they didn't have time to, you know, put together a stronger proposal, I don't know. So I can't assume anything regarding that. But I think it was very similar. And also with Tedsy, they didn't have any, or at least they didn't specify if they have any experience doing a major reconstruction project like this one. And so we're talking about $30 million reconstruction project. I mean, this is just the planning phase, but we need people that have done this in the past, especially because the ask is a little bit more than that, just doing reconstruction. We're going to be redesigning the entire street. And so, yeah, that was kind of a concern to me, that they need to show that they have obviously the past experience.
Sure, absolutely. Can I ask the same questions to Oscar? I'm just curious on the scoring, and this isn't the first project, and not just you, I just.
Oscar Garcia, Director of Public Works for the record.
So I hope you were listening when I was, what I was asking was, there was the J, GDJ Engineering and the Tedsy firm, and I saw, well, you kind of gave high marks for, for almost everyone, but they were such different between you and Anna. What, what were your, because if I'm looking at just your scores, then I would say we'd probably should just hear from all of them. Was there one that stood out more so than the others? I know CSC is, looks like the frontrunner for everyone, but they're so close. Did you not see those same concerns that Anna had in the, those two firms?
For the most part, all of them are very qualified. Some that were rated lower are past experiences, right? And so I took that into consideration. Some of them had detailed jobs that had a certain value, but yet they didn't put completion value at the end. So I, I wanted to see that, right? So the other ones were very thorough, they were very familiar with the area, so I looked at that as well. And just the overall presentation, the way they presented it, some of them, to me, added more value because they were more detailed than the others. So that's why they were rated.
Which ones did you, would you say had the most familiarity with our area?
The ones I rated one and two.
So that would be CSC and Cop Finley.
Yeah. And my third one, I did, yeah, I did mention them because, because of what you mentioned earlier, their familiarity with, yes, and previous experience with one of the members there. He's been doing streets and drainage for decades that I remember, so, but yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't know if Commissioner has questions?
Yeah, Anna, real quick. In the brief summary, you use a term associated preliminary engineering. Are you talking about like construction management? So whoever gets this contract would also do the bid, help us do the bid process to get the construction company?
No, no, no.
Anything like that?
No, we're actually following FHWA definition for preliminary engineering. So in this case, it's like, I don't know if you noticed, in the RFQ documents, we describe the scope of work as doing the planning and divisioning, because we need that. We want to make sure that we have community input, and that's going to be very key. Typically, you know, that's, we have one public hearing, and then we say we're done with our requirement. Then we have the preliminary engineering, which is basically anything leading to that final design. So it would require, you know, I don't know, like schematic, preliminary schematics, alternatives, you know, everything related to hydraulics and, you know, all of that work that you need to do in order to have your final design. And, and then we also need environmental to make sure that is, you know, we need clearance, and then we need the final design. So those are the stages, or that's what, what's implied.
This project is not going to give you a final design?
It will not.
No.
Okay.
Yes, it will.
It will?
It will give us a final design.
Okay, I thought it was just preliminary, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. And you see, that's, that's kind of the general discussion, but I think it's more like we need to make sure that we kind of stick to the FHWA definition, and we can, you know, maybe do a better job educating the public as well.
And so as we construct this, then whichever company we have here, we'll work with the construction company to make sure everything's on board with the design, correct? Or is it, here are the designs via consumers?
I think it's more like that, yeah. So I think here.
Generally, when you have a company that designs a project and has the final plans, they're the ones that are involved in the going out for construction.
I mean, that might be, yeah, go ahead.
Typically, for a design package, we can include a construction phase services. This project, it should be included, and I recommend we include construction phase services throughout the construction of the project, so.
Because you're absolutely right, Anna, my fear is not following the federal guidelines. I've seen it on other projects that I've worked on, and want to make sure that we have cohesion. I agree with you, Anna, 100%. Luis, need for the supplemental information?
And I will say that none of us are engineers up here. Trust the engineers in our city and go with what they recommend.
Luis has done a great job for us, so.
Well, Luis knows he has my full support, and Anna, I tell her as much as I can, as I can. But I, I just, I had those questions on the, on the scoring. Do you, is there any other questions?
I did notice that they were looking at the drainage as well, so that's a number one concern for, I guess, everybody. So we're, we're doing good. Thank you.
I'm just curious, are any of the firms local? Like, I don't know how it's going to work.
What do you mean?
Like, local, like, are any of these, I know, like, Cop Fin, I don't know. I'm just trying to find, because like, I know in the past, we would always give our contracts to bigger companies that really don't have that much, how do I say this?
One of the employees for CSC actually lives in Harlingen, I don't know about the others.
Yeah, I see Mr. Harlingen resident.
And Gabe, is there any federal money involved in this?
Yes, this is all federal money.
Okay, well, federal money, you can't pick and choose local people over national people.
It has a little summary in there, or you put some language I saw in about that.
Yeah, you're usually right, Randy, we would go for something like that, but because this has federal money attached to it, we can't use that as a consideration.
As a criteria.
But it's something that we all agree on with other projects that we can do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend it. So is the commission wanting to have like a workshop to, to ask the questions, or are you, okay, hold on. There's more than just Mike. And, you know, I'm just putting it out there so that we were clear. Are we wanting, you said that was a staff's recommendation, right?
Just, just based on the magnitude of the project.
Right, and I, and I want to make sure that Commissioner Lopez is your district, if this is something that you want to do, and I'm sure we can take the time to do that, or if y'all want to go forward and just move, move forward without having a workshop.
I would like to have the workshops. I would like for them to present us with their designs and for the commission to make a decision at that point.
Just the top three?
Yes. Will you guys determine the top three are? Let's have a decision.
Would you not want to include them all since the, the numbers are kind of all over the place?
I think we just stick with the, in my mind, stick with, the ones I look towards as specifically is Luis, Anna, and Oscar, right? Those are the three that, in my mind.
The reason I say that is because I, I think Oscar's number three is different from the others. What is the top three? Right?
The top three is CSC, Cop Finley, and Hanson.
Right, and Oscar's with Tedsy, and so there's just a little bit of a, but I, I mean, I leave that to you, I mean, y'all can make that decision, but if we're going to do a workshop, might as well.
Why don't we just do all six? Just to get out of the way, and then whoever has it, come in there. Because then there was no purpose in like grading them, each other's graded by numbers.
I say top three.
Good.
Okay, your district.
All right. So is there a motion, or do we need them? Let me see.
Yes, it's an action item. So I would make.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion for the top three, Commissioner.
I make the motion to hear presentations from the top three point-getters in this item, for them to do a 15-minute presentation with five minutes for questions on their designs and future plans for commerce.
And we're going to relay that to them, right? Those 15 minutes?
I think they're all here, so.
Okay, great.
My second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, and maybe we can do that as quickly as possible, can we get that scheduled?
We can do it for our next meeting.
We have a special meeting for Tuesday.
So why don't we do that, just so that way we're not wasting any time? Is that okay? Everybody all right? Fantastic.
Next Tuesday, 5:30.
15 minutes? Okay. All right, item. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes, we did, a motion from Lopez. Okay. Item nine, presentation of the investment report for the city of Harlingen for the quarter ending June 30th, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Robert Rodriguez, I'm the Finance Director. I'd like to go over a brief overview of the investment report for, for the period of April 1 through June 30th, 2023. Just, just a summary of, of the highlights of this investment report. We do have $81,507,000 in total book value in the city funds as of June 30th, 2023. Our interest earned for this period is $959,425.
Would you like to hit the button and?
Yeah, I was just giving a brief summary, and then I was going to go, go through. But I can go, I can go through. It's kind of small, but on the first portfolio summary, on the right-hand side is the current. So, so right around here, you have your $81,507,919, with interest earned totaling $959,425. Something new that we have in, in this portfolio is that we do have interest accretion of 17,945, because we did, under the advisement of our financial advisors, Hilltop, we did also go into U.S. government securities, which are treasuries, because they're a slightly higher interest rate. So our, our asset allocation at June 30th is, our, our bank deposits are 3.24%, of the total portfolio. Our, our tech pool, external investment pool is at 90%, 90.76%, and our U.S. treasuries are 5.99% of the, of the total portfolio. And at the right-hand side, on the, on the portfolio characteristics, you will see our, our current yield to maturity, which is about 4.99.
And that's a June 30, 4.99?
Right.
Interest rates have gone up, short-term interest rates have gone up.
And, and a month from now, the Federal Reserve will meet, and my bets are going to raise
interest rates again 25 basis points.
That is correct. That's what the anticipated.
Whether it happens or not, nobody knows.
Yeah, that, that is what is anticipated. So here, you'll just see a rating distribution of our, of our portfolio. We have demand deposits, of course, and we have AAA on the investment test, tech, tech pool, and we have A-1+ on the short-term treasuries, which is the highest you can go on, on the short-term treasuries.
And point out that the, two weeks ago, three, yeah, two weeks, just a little over two weeks ago, Fitch downgraded U.S. government bonds from a AAA to a double A.
Right. And so we did, we did look at our investment policy, and we do still fall within the investment policy as, as it states that we can invest in the, in the U.S. treasuries or U.S. government securities.
Right, and, and you can invest in those even though they've been downgraded from AAA.
Yes, sir, thank you. So that's, that's our allocation of our rating distribution. On the next slide, you'll see how the benchmark comparison, how the interest rates continue to climb. So at June 30th, it's 4.91. That's for six months. They have, they have gone up. We, our, our treasuries are at 5.396, the ones that we currently have invested in. And under the advisement of our financial advisors, we have gone out for an additional $5 million with a interest rate of 5.335.
At what maturation?
That one is a one-year. The, the one that we are currently in matures in, in December. That one was a six-month, and the one that we just entered into, and that one, that one is a one-year.
What kind of return we're going to get, the one for December?
We, we are getting a 5.396. And that's, that's basically an overview of what we have. So we, we are still in tech pool, we have about $5 million on June 30th, we have $5 million in treasuries, and, and after that, we, in August, we entered into an additional $5 million. That concludes the report.
We just, we just had a budget amendment that increased our interest earnings by about $700,000 because of the increase in interest rates that we're generating.
Just, just to also, year-to-date, for, for interest that we've earned on these investments has been 2.5 million, $2,548,000, which is, we have not seen that kind of interest in many, many years.
How much was that again, that we earned?
$2,548,000.
That's for the year.
Yeah, for, for a year-to-date, as of June 30th.
2.1?
So we still need, 2, 2,548. And we still need the, the last quarter of July, August, and September, so.
Great job, Robert.
Thank you.
Any questions? Nope, thank you.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you.
Item 10, consideration and possible action to propose a desired tax rate for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and schedule a public hearing to be held on September 6, 2023. year 2023, 2024, and schedule a public hearing to be held on September 6, 2023.
Mayor, one of the things that I'd like to point out is that we have been working with the proposed budget of 0.545519, and this would advertise that rate if the commission chooses. We do have the option of changing that. However, if we change it, we can only go down, we can't go up without going to the voters, or, so I just wanna point that out before you vote on this, that this is not setting this rate in stone, it is just merely giving the public notice that we can still change that in the future.
That is great, so.
Do you wanna explain that, Robert?
Yes, as part of the, the tax setting process, we, we do have to include a, an intention of how y'all intend to proceed with the tax rate at this, the, the tax rate that we have used to, to calculate the budget has been the 0.545519. So today, we, we do have to have a record vote on how you intend to go forward, and of course, we recommend the, the rate that we've been using for the budget. But as Gabe said, this is not setting the rate at this current time. This is just to advertise it on, on the notice of the public hearing, and then the public hearing occurs, the, the public comes out to voice their opinion. But you can change that rate at any time, up until you set the rate in, after our public hearing.
Now, the, the official rate will be set when we set the, the M and L and the I and S rate.
That is great, yes. And that'll be set through an ordinance.
Right.
So I have a question. At the last meeting, I asked to see if we could look what the budget would look like if we reduced it, and there was some question, I think it was almost a cent. If the commission votes today, and at our next special meeting, we see what that looks like, what you're saying is that we could potentially reduce it?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to.
And, and at that, and at a later date, you can go with that new rate if you, if you choose, yes.
Yes, and we'll show more information on that at Tuesday.
On Tuesday, great. And, yes.
Go ahead.
Now, I was just gonna say that, that when y'all vote, it does have to be a record vote, so I just need to take down.
Right. And it has to be today, this, could we do this potentially at the next special meeting, or do we need it right now, to go along with your schedule of posting, is that?
Um, we could, it just, I'll have to calculate that, yeah, I, I think we can, because depending on, on when we plan to finalize the budget and the tax rate, you can, because we still have all the way until September 30th to, to do that.
We, we can still do that?
You can still, I could put this on the agenda for Tuesday to, to vote on this, Tuesday.
And we'll still be fine?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You're sure?
Yes, mm-hmm.
I think that's the best way to do it, because I wanna make sure that we look at that budget and tax rate at the exact same time, so we know exactly what we need when we come to a decision on this. So I would make a motion, after you make your question, but I'm gonna make a motion at table.
I wanna make sure that I understand this. So we can change the, I know you're gonna give us some numbers if it was a one-cent reduction, correct?
Yes.
Well, we were looking at 0.0086 cent reduction.
How much?
0.0086, that's the number I presented at the last meeting.
What if it was a one point, it was a 1% reduction?
Well, 1% would be a lot.
One cent, one cent.
Oh. I mean, we can, we can calculate.
We'd have to make that calculation, we don't have that.
I, I understand.
But we can look at that at the next meeting, and I think what Commissioner Lopez is suggesting is that we don't take that record vote today, that we look at everything at the next, at the special meeting beforehand, before doing that, that record vote, and it's, and, and I just wanted to make sure that we have the time to do it, and if we do, then I don't see any harm in, in that, given that we'll still comply and meet deadlines, and then the commission will have more options available to them to, to review, and I would, I would ask that, if the commissioner's asked for the one cent, if we can, we can have a presentation on that as well.
Absolutely.
So there was a motion by Commissioner Lopez, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and so this is.
Tabled for Tuesday.
Thank you, Robert.
It'll be on Tuesday? Yes, sir, Tuesday. It'll be after the budget presentation, it's the last thing we do.
All right. Item 11, consideration and possible action to cancel the city commission meeting scheduled for October 4, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 12, board appointments, we'll start with Commissioner Kinsey.
I have none, ma'am.
I have none as well.
I have, I have two. For the EDC, I'd like to appoint Linda Burke and Lizzie Putnam.
Yes, Linda, Linda, how about Don Ray Leonard for the Charter Review Committee Board?
Um, I don't know that those need to be, are those the ad hoc committees?
That's not on here.
That's the ad hoc committee, but.
You can just send that to Gabe.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, but that's only two that we have so far.
Actually, it's on the list, right here.
Is it? Okay, or if we're doing it this way, then that's fine.
Four's on the top.
Cause then four, you might have one.
No, he, he did send one in.
If, if we're going, if we're going, yes, Carly Burns Thomas for the charter review.
Yeah, and for the charter review, Victor Leal.
Okay. Lopez, now that we're doing this, do you have someone?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay, and do you have any other appointments, Commissioner?
I do, I do wanna mention, do you know how many, or Josh, do you know how many empty spots we still have for the, the youth gene advisory board?
The Utes?
Utes.
That's one of my favorite movies, science.
Two Utes?
The Utes?
Yeah, yeah, it's the two Utes.
I can't say what I was like, I can't say that line.
Closing argument, I'm.
Everything that he said, no, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
This conversation is deteriorating rapidly.
The only reason I ask is because the, as you guys know, school just started, so I'm hoping that, that the, now that the school year started, we can get some of these kids, you know, actually participating in the board. And also, if you had, if you had appointed someone before, I would strongly suggest making sure that they're still here, cause I know like my point, my appointee, I'm gonna have to get somebody else, cause she's already, right now, UT.
Oh, congratulations.
So I'm gonna pick somebody else.
I have a suggestion.
Give me some, some names, please.
Oh, get you somebody.
Yes, yes, I was gonna say, maybe you can, you can talk to your students.
You're teenage central.
I'll get you some Hawks.
There you go, that sounds, that's good. For everybody listening at home, I support the Hawks. Cardinals, very much so.
So do I.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, item 13.
Going back to item 12, as a relation to the Charter Review Committee Board, I was gonna make a recommendation, I was talking to a gentleman who has been on these Charter Review Boards in the past, about limiting the scope of what we want them to look at, right? And I know that the mayor in the past has said that she wants us to update it, but I think that the best way to go is for each of us, and over the next two weeks, to review the charter. If there's something that concerns you specifically that you wanna look at, then we give them the marching orders going in, we want you to look at X, Y, Z, rather than looking at things that we have no intention to change or whatnot.
If you do that, then you need that staff now, just so that we know what.
Correct. And so that, then we'll bring it back the next, in two weeks of the board appointment meeting, that's when we'll make that, give them the marching orders there. We'll discuss it at that point.
Good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
So, two weeks, the homework is, review the charter, if there's anything that you wanna review or change, that's when we'll, that's what you bring before us, and then we can discuss it then.
And Amanda did hand out copies of the charter to everybody, so you have our copy.
Quick, quick question. Is it, when is the charter, as soon as everyone has their pick, that's when it's gonna meet, or when's it gonna meet?
I think that we have, I, I, we can be flexible, we are giving them a whole year to look at this.
No, 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 like, when are they gonna start meeting?
Once the, once they're complete, and once we have the, everybody's suggestions, and then I would suggest that we gather and have either send those all to, to Gabe, or if we need to, we can, we can, I don't know if we need to collaborate on it, I wouldn't think